Not Lisa.
Call a meeting to order, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance tip of the eye of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between you and the school committee. It is an opportunity for you to express an opinion on issues with the school committee authority. Anyone wishing to speak has up to three minutes to present material. Please begin by stating your name and the city, town you reside in. So if we have anybody who wants public comment, take the podium. No public comment? All right, we'll move on. The approval of minutes.
Move approval of the January 10th, 2024 meetings.
Scott Wood has made a motion to approve the minutes, seconded by Joanna True. Mr. Early. Ms. Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Slavowski.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mr. James.
Yes.
Okay, Treasurers' Report.
Move approval of the Treasurers' Report for January.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from the Treasurers' Report by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Murphy. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Slavinsky.
Yes.
Sorry. Ms. O'Connor. Mr. Irving.
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mr. Early.
Mr. James.
Mr. James, I'm sorry. Mr. James, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Old business, there's no old business. Reports and communications due to no school, we do not have a student rep here tonight, so we will move on to Superintendent Lynch.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Tonight before you, I have personnel action of a CAD drafting instructor, an interim transportation coordinator, a maintenance mechanic, and a road bus driver. I also have before you an ELL instructor to provide SEI training, as well as the resignation of a electrical instructor. Budget update, the executive committee met earlier this evening, and we are recommending a 2.69 overall budget increase for FY '25. MCAS update, 23 sophomores and juniors took the biology retest on February 6th and 7th. Results should be made in April. We received the results from the November retest. We have four juniors who will take the math MCAS again in March. Our current statistics, our class of 2024, we have 100% MCAS have passed all areas. Class of 2025, 100% ELL MCAS, 98.7 math MCAS passed, and a 99.4 biology MCAS pass rate. Class of 2026, 93.4% biology MCAS. These students need to take the ELA and math this coming spring. School building update, as all of you know, the new building vote failed at the polls. I have met recently with 10 out of our 11 town managers and mayors. Some of the feedback they provided was there was a general lack of communication regarding the project, regional agreements, capital apportionment, lack of community buy-in, conflicting interest, no debt exclusion attached to a positive vote, feeling that MSBA should not look at both schools the same way as they look at an elementary school, need to look at communication of the school committee to all of the town boards, what the overall cost of the project, feeling that the school building committee should have had more elected officials as a part of that committee, and feeling that our messaging was not clear and effective. I also met with Representative John Chan and Newbury Court Councillor Khan, along with Kara Cosmos. They two provided feedback, and we're looking forward to working together. I had other things scheduled this week, but unfortunately I had to cancel them due to my own, myself being sick. But over the next few weeks, I will continue to meet with our elected officials and anyone else that is interested in talking to gain more insight on how we move forward and how we can do better at Whittier Tech. We have kids and staff that are counting on us to figure out a path forward. Is there any questions?
Could I just, could I just, I'm sorry. Just because I'm trying to catch up. So some of the new hires, like the CAD drafting instructor, is that a new hire or replacement?
Replacement.
And the same with the interim transportation, is just?
Yes. Resignation.
A resignation. Okay. Thank you.
I'm just wondering if we can look at some point how we go beyond, like the elected officials, and try to reach out to towns by doing some, I don't know, polling surveying or something to see if there are other underlying issues that didn't ring a bell as loud as some of the other issues.
Right. Yeah, I think overall, it seems that some of, many of, I would say many of the cities and towns didn't feel like that they were informed, that they knew what was going on, that they were reported to. And so I think, you know, we all have ownership in that, right? Because we have to figure out a communication plan moving forward, right? And that's something that we, as a committee and myself, need to work on, developing something so that people know what's going on at Whittier and feel like they're a part of something. You know, you want everyone to feel like they're a part of Whittier Tech, and it's clear that many do not feel that they're a part of what's going on here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've talked to Mayor Barrett in Havre, and I told you that I'd be given of the update through the minutes that we have from our meetings.
And we also have a Whittier wire that we sent to select boards and town managers.
You send those minutes through that, Joe?
We could, I mean, that's something that we, as a whole committee, need to come up with a plan, because that was heard loud and clear, that there's something.
I think that's a good idea, to send the minutes from a prior meeting to all the towns, our cities and towns. It's a shot.
So now, we really, we're really in a place where we need to make a decision. And the decision really is about us moving forward with the same project, the same cost, and going out to another vote the first week of April, or we need to remove our statement of interest and possibly look at doing it again at some other time, by removing our statement of interest from MSBA. At this point, if there was a weather event that everyone didn't get to vote, or, you know, some other event, but it was clear, it was loud and clear how people felt about this building project. We cannot go back and change the building project. The building project is the building project. There was no going back and trying to scale it back down. So this is the choice that this committee needs to make, is whether we go forward with another vote, which I, as a superintendent, wouldn't recommend, or we remove our statement of interest and try to get back in the pipeline at some other time.
Well, I will make the motion to remove our statement of interest from the MSBA Building Authority and resubmit at some other time in the future when we're ready with a redesigned project going forward.
Second.
Mr. Early.
No, I still have a question while Maureen was talking to Superintendent True. Those numbers that we had are not bid numbers. These were numbers that were taken in general from other projects. We haven't gone out to bid on a lot of this work. We had a contingency of either 10 or 12% contingency money in there too. So there was room to work, but what we got to do is we just got to go forward. We could have done a better job, but we just got to go forward. Do you have a way we go?
I agree. I think we have to withdraw the statement of interest. The taxpayers spoke loud and clear that they're not in support of the project as it was presented. And I think through the conversations, ideas were thrown out that, you know, I think we need to consider, to take into account, especially around the communication piece, and that there's potentially opportunities to look at the project again in a different way, and potentially maybe another statement of interest, maybe, maybe just more creative ways of addressing the problems that we have. We'll see. I think that what that's how we have to move forward, is start to look at withdrawing the statement of interest and determining, setting the priorities of what has to be done in the immediate future to keep the building safe and functional for students, but then a long-term plan of how to address the bigger issues.
One other thing, we still have the problem with the separate system slash wastewater. We have to get on that soon. There's all kinds of options, possibly tying into Merrimack, that's a year, two years on the low. But right now, we have that wastewater treatment plant problem, and we can start addressing that.
Any other comments? Question? We have a motion to withdraw the statement of interest, made by Ms. Holliday, seconded by Mr. Murphy. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Holliday.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Slavowski.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Ms. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mr. James.
Yes.
Okay.
Just finish up?
Yes.
So, you know, we'll be, MSBA Capital Pipeline Program, a declaration of removal of the statement of interest. And just so I can, just so everyone is aware, Whittier Tech is no longer eligible for any financial assistance from MSBA that it otherwise may have potentially received from the authority as part of our capital pipeline program. The city, Whittier Tech shall not be eligible for any reimbursement from MSBA now or any time in the future from the capital pipeline program or otherwise for the statement of interest. For the Whittier school, unless Whittier Tech submits a statement of interest to MSBA Board of Directors' vote to invite city Whittier Tech into the MSB pipeline, the Whittier Tech shall not be eligible for any reimbursement from the MSBA at any time now or in the future for any costs related to the indebtedness, related to the potential project, including but not limited to new interest or principal cost on bond anticipation notes, bonds, or any other forms of indebtedness, and/or any costs related to issuance of any indebtedness. Whittier Tech hereby releases and forever discharges the MSBA from, and with respect to any claims, demands, or any liabilities from which the Whittier Tech ever had, now has, or may have for MSBA reimbursement or funding for a potential project. If Whittier Tech is interested in pursuing any other projects, Whittier Tech at any time in the future, the statement of interest grant amount, if any, and the reimbursement rate, if any, for the project shall be governed by the rules, regulations, guidelines, and policies of MSBA in place at the time of the future application. And MSBA has no obligation to take any action on the statement of interest or approve any grants for such funding. So I just wanted to make sure people were aware of that. Other building information, we were recently approached by the town of Merrimack to possibly tie into their new wastewater treatment plant. I think that that would be a win-win for everyone. So we, over the next few months, will start engaging in discussions along with Merrimack to see what the possibilities are. We do have to fix, you know, some piping in our current wastewater treatment plant, but let's fix that and start having these discussions, and then we can kind of see how we move forward. And then we also really need to develop a strategic plan to fix our current building. We are in a situation where we really need to take a look at that and make sure that we can stay open for our kids and for our community and for our region. So I know many of you are looking for answers right away, and I believe we need to take a really thoughtful approach about how we move forward and learn some lessons from what happened over the last six months. And we certainly will welcome members of our community to be a part of that process. But it's going to take us some time, and, you know, there's, it took us two years to get to the building project. It's going to take us at least a few months to kind of develop a long-range plan about how we move forward with this. So I just really want to thank the school committee, the school building committee, for their time and their effort and volunteers. It didn't go the way we had hoped, but I truly believe that something better is always over on that horizon, and this didn't happen for a reason, and we'll find out what that reason is, and something better will be happening for Whittier Tech, because our kids and our staff are counting on us to do that. Thank you. So I have a field trip form, an out-of-state field trip for the auto body to go to the Bayberry Vintage Cars in Hampton, New Hampshire. So I'm looking for approval to be able to do that there. It's going to be in Hampton, and the field trip date is February 27.
Do we have the right paperwork for that?
We will have the right paperwork for that, sir.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor from Mr. Wood to allow the field trip, seconded by Ms. Slavowski. Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Holliday.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Slavowski.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Irving. Mr. Irving? He's muted.
He's muted.
He mouthed, yes.
Yes.
Yes, there it is. Ms. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mr. James.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent. Next, we have the Principal Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Leganes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, rest of the school committee members. Just talking about Whittier Sports, the winter sports, the wrestling team hosted the Travis Yell tourney at Whittier last Saturday, the third, and hosted the Havre Hammers Wrestling Club on Sunday, February 4th. Eight schools were represented in the Travis Yell tourney, and hundreds of youth wrestlers competed on February 3rd. It turned out to be another successful day for Whittier wrestling team and for the entire wrestling community. February 1st started our celebration of Black History Month. Whittier continues to highlight contributions of African-Americans to create lessons, discussions to educate students in all aspects of diversity. This is our opportunity for us as a school community to continue understanding Black history, going beyond stories of racism, slavery, and to spotlight Black excellence. All students have completed midterm assessments, and we are well on our way through quarter three, if you can believe it. Our new last day is June 13th, June 13th, because we just had a snow day today, and that would be the 180th day. Congratulations goes out to our Whittier guidance team for the great work they do every day and beyond with our students. We have been celebrating and honoring them during National Counseling Week. It is important to take the time to recognize these professionals for their passion and tireless work, especially in this day and age. Here are the amazing individuals at Whittier. Deb Costello, Marsha Curtis, Michelle Catina, Jill Krakowitz, Andy Bonifacio, Heather Sweeney, Rachel Rossi, Lillian Leveste, Dr. Whitney, and Lee Gastaway. So congratulations goes out to the guidance counselors that are just working tirelessly since COVID-2020, just going crazy with what goes on in our world. So thank you to the guidance counselors and Mr. James as well, the retired guidance counselors. Winter vacation starts. Winter vacation starts Monday, February 19th to the 23rd. We're offering boot camps. Attendance makeup during the four days of vacation, 8 to 12, starting Tuesday, the 20th, and through Friday, the 23rd. And how many, Katrina? About 61 students are there, so that's excellent for the attendance, as well as, you know, the boot camp for their academics. Freshmen have chosen their shops, and they will start in their vocational areas March 13th. Letters are going out after February break. The guidance team has been interviewing at middle schools, and these interviews will be completed by the beginning of March. Monday after vacation, we were also welcomed, 17 new incoming freshmen transfers. So Katrina, Ms. Johnson, is wheeling deal in the schedule and fitting all those freshmen in, so that'll be exciting to see some new faces in the building. During our most recent staff development day on Friday, February 2nd, our staff took part in embedded academics. Everyone thought it was another great moment for our positive culture that we have here. They had done this for, in other times, it was prior to COVID. It was nice to bring back this year. You're asking what embedded academics was? All academic teachers, guidance counselors, specialists, teachers, aides, and support personnel were placed in vocational technical areas based on their particular area of interest. So it was a fun day. We had a lot of cooks that day, and learning how to cook, and a lot of the teachers, so... And they don't, they don't get the chance to kind of cross-pollinate sometimes because they're in the vocational area and the academic area, so a lot of fun. The Booster Club is excited. They're selling merchandise and snacks, especially during that wrestling tourney. Thanks goes out to Heather and Janice, who hopefully will never leave me as the Booster Club President and Assistant President, even though they don't have kids here, they've had kids go through here. They're all graduating, so I beg them, please, please stay around. So I thank them for that as well. This year's high school play is Mean Girls. The high school version is a musical based on the 2004 film that tells the story of Katie Heron, a teenage girl who finds herself in a suburban Illinois public high school after years of being homeschooled. The drama cast has been rehearsing three to four days a week. The dates, if you want to pencil in the dates, Friday, excuse me, 3/22, that's March 22nd, 23rd on Saturday at 7:00 PM, that's Friday, Saturday, 7:00 PM, then on Sunday, the 24th, at 2:00 PM. Also, as part of our Skills USA American Spirit Award Project, Whittier welcomed three senators and the representatives for Meet Your Rep Fair on Friday, February 9th. Seniors and junior students had the opportunity to further educate themselves on the value and importance of voting. There were also introduced the roles and importance of their state reps and how they impact their day-to-day lives. Students also had the opportunity to pre-register or register to vote during the fair. So that's all I have for you. A lot of positive stuff going on. Yes?
Explain to me about the freshmen, were they 14, 17?
Seventeen incoming freshmen. I could give you the exact towns and cities.
No, but...
Come from, but 17 freshmen that are transferred.
From Frank Murray, yes. Other schools.
Correct.
They originally weren't...
Accepted, yeah, and they reapplied, and they're coming through the doors after break. So it's going to be fun to see some more faces. I could probably get you the stats. I don't have them all on me, but I could get you the exact stats.
That's a lot of questions.
Oh, that's okay. Yes, all in district, yep, all in district.
Thank you.
And I could give you the specific cities and towns. Oh, yeah, they're all in district. Yep. Real excited. Yeah, we're getting emails that thank you so much, so happy to...
I think it's important to know, no, we don't accept students from out of district.
I'll make sure.
They don't, they are not accepted when they are from out of district.
I know that.
So they have to be from our living cities and towns.
Yep.
So these kids may have applied in the fall, but now they're reapplying.
Correct, correct. And they're in. Yeah, so that's 17 of them. Good, so...
But that's not going to affect our October numbers, correct?
No, this is after October.
No, the number's going to the town.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
All right. Our business manager, Ms. Kara Cosmos. No report. Quick and simple, I like that. So committee chairperson, happy May, March annual agenda items. We have the school committee self-evaluation. I believe that was put out on the board, the chalkboard?
Classroom.
Classroom. And budget review is going to be in the March agenda. Subcommittee reports. Mr. Gary James. The executive board.
Yes. We had a meeting last, at the school committee last week, or last month. And we had a meeting tonight as well.
Okay. And we need a vote for the approval of the minutes of the meeting on January 10th. Do I have a motion?
So moves.
So move. Mr. Murphy, second.
Second.
Second. Mr. Rossi, thank you. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Holliday.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Slavowski.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mr. James.
Yes.
Okay. Instructional personnel meeting. Ms. True.
We met in November, and I will be meeting again in this spring. Okay, we don't need to set anything right now? Okay.
Okay. Plant operations, Mr. Murphy.
We have not met, but I think a meeting is in order for next month.
Five o'clock?
Yeah, that's right.
So... So meeting, March 13th at 5:00?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Salary negotiations, Mr. Early.
Yes, we had a meeting last week due to a problem with the open meeting law. There was a complaint on it, and we rescheduled that meeting.
Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes of that meeting.
Okay, do I have a second? Second? Okay. Mr. Er, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Holliday.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Slavowski.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Ms. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mr. James.
Yes.
Okay. Policy, Mr. Irving.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we met this evening and reviewed close to 40 policies, made some adjustments, and reviewed them. They will be in our packet for the March meeting. We will need a meeting for the remainder of reviews, so I'm not sure what would be a convenient time, but we should meet on the 13th prior to our school committee meeting in March.
So would 4:30 work?
Again?
4:30 on the 13th?
4:30?
Yes.
Okay, how about the others? Connor and Scott?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yeah, it's five of me.
Yes.
Okay. The first half we reviewed should be in your packet for a first reading in March, and then the rest we'll review and do in April. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. We have no new business. We have a reason to go on executive session.
No, we got to go meeting dates.
Meeting dates.
Chief.
Oh, sorry. Just repeat all the meetings we just made.
Almost made it.
All right, so we have a plant operations meeting on the 13th at 5:00. We have a policy meeting at 4:30 on the 13th, and...
Budget workshop, March 13th at 5:30, and the regular school committee meeting, March
So budget workshop, March thirteenth at five thirty, and then the regular school committee meeting, March thirteenth at six thirty.
Correct, thank you. So. All right. So where I was. We have a reason to go on executive session. I need a motion to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-using, non-union personnel. Route bus drivers, as an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, as decided by the chair, on the bargaining position of the committee, and upon completion of the executive session, will return to open session.
So moved.
So moved. I have a motion by Mr. Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I miss Holliday. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Holliday.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Slavowski.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Ms. Carpenter.
Yes.
And Mr. James.
Yes.